All right. I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council in regular session for Monday, May 15, 2017, and ask the city re-cord order to please call roll.
Counsel Ryan?
Here.
Counsel Freeman?
Here.
Counsel Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
And Counsel Anderson?
Here.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anybody here from the Salem Kaiser Education Foundation? I am going to, with the indulgence of the council, I'm going to put off our special orders of business to see if Ms. Lee is able to get here for the proclamation, and then if that doesn't happen at the end, I'll just do the proclamation and we'll get it to her. Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, we will move on then to public testimony, no, committee reports, and I do have one. Mr. Loudon, thank you for joining us tonight, and Dave Loudon will be talking to us about the Parks Board. Thank you, sir.
Do I still need to give my name?
Huh?
Yes, my name's David Loudon, I'm chairman of the Parks Board. I live in Kaiser. Salem Rugby Club, a countywide organization, wants to make Claggett Creek Park their home pitch. They want to work with the city to put in more permanent structures and address some safety hazards. They'd like to put in some sort of permanent goalposts, and apparently there's a bench that's in the way. Donna Bradley is now the Parks Board representative to the Festival Advisory Board, replacing me.
So...
I thought I'd get out of one meeting, but I'm helping him, so I'm still stuck for a while.
Well, can I back you up and ask a question about the rugby? And this may be a question then for our staff. It's also a heavily-used field for soccer. Would those poles and/or other changes still be compatible with soccer and other games that are played out there?
Right now, they're somehow attaching their goalposts to the soccer goals, and they're willing to make theirs, like, removable, so you can still play soccer on it.
Okay.
So they shouldn't interfere, and hopefully somewhere along the line, we can move them to a different facility, it's kind of like Kaiser Rapids, when we get to that point in developing that park.
Okay, but these changes would not preclude the existing uses right now?
No, we question that on that. It's, they're just willing to work with other people and make sure that the park is, and they're willing to put in some other amenities in the park, too, at the same time.
And this is compatible with the master plan?
Master plan's pretty silent on specific sports in parks. The field at Claggett is suitable for rugby. Robert and I actually met with the gentleman, Jesse, that was at the budget meeting, and talked about what they would like to do. He presented us with a proposal late Friday. I've read through it, Robert and I haven't got together and talked about it, but we'll be bringing that forward, talk about what they'd like and what they bring to the table, what they want from the city, those kind of things, so.
Counsel Herrera has a question, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I remember the guy correctly, he said that if our park is compatible for soccer, he said that rugby would not be a problem, even in the goal things. That's what he said here. So I don't see what would be, if they're allowing it for soccer, would be the same type of thing, or is that...
Well, I just want to make sure the dimensions, because I'm not familiar with rugby, and if it was different dimensions, or lining, or, you know, however that's done. So, all I know is that they call the field "the pitch."
I think they both call it a pitch.
Well, there we go. So we have two pitchers. Sorry, it's been a long day already.
Oh, that's okay. It's been a long day for me, too.
All right.
Let's see, Donna Bradley is now the, how did you do that one? Dylan Durin presented information about a 10-station workout circuit equipment from the HEAL grant. A HEAL grant, it should cost about $6,000. HEAL grants are available and mount from $5,000 to $25,000. The grant cycle is from August, was from last year, from August 1st to September 30th. It hasn't been posted yet for this year. The Parks Board is requesting permission to apply for the HEAL grant for the 10-station workout circuit equipment. Permission to apply for, sorry.
Okay.
Or is that something you want to do?
City manager?
No. Parks Board would be appropriate.
I would agree. So do you need a motion or a consensus for the Parks Board to move forward with that grant, Mr. Johnson? That grant application?
If there's not a timing issue, we should put it on the agenda, so we have a formal motion, we don't have to suspend the rules. Is there a timing issue?
The grant probably, the grant cycle will probably be from August 1st to September 30th, so I think you have some time to do that. Okay.
So it's a recommendation of the Parks Board that we apply for that grant, and then that information can come to Mr. Johnson, and we can get it on to an agenda in June-ish?
June-July.
June-July?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good?
Sometime.
All right.
All right.
We just want to make sure that you don't run out of time to actually craft the language of the grant.
Okay. I think we have some people that can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
At the work session on the Parks Fee, the mayor charged the Parks Board with coming up with a priority list. A group was formed to work with Robert to compare the survey results with Robert's needs, but I believe the city manager told us to wait a little while on that until we get further along in the process. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think it would be useful to actually know whether or not the council adopts the Parks Fee, or if does, or if they choose to put it out for a vote, wait until after we see if the citizens support it, before you actually start to move forward on doing work associated with it.
All right.
I think that makes most sense.
All right, thank you. Robert Johnson reported that the orchid trees are in the process of being removed. The rain slowed that process down. For the pathway around Kaiser Rapids Park, an request for proposal to, has been sent out for paving of the pathway. Electroconduit for the restrooms from Shamawa Road is now in place, and I believe, I saw it, it was Backfield, right? Has it been Backfield? PGE will set a new poll on Shamawa. Youth liaison reported that he would be attending Claggett Creek Watershed Council meeting and would be working along with 20 volunteers removing invasive species from Mike Whitman Park. Hans Schneider is soliciting additional donations for a larger coverage structure at the Kaiser Rapids volleyball court than he originally planned. Hans is also considering doing a volleyball tournament on the eclipse weekend. And that's all, unless you have some questions.
Any more questions for Mr. Loudon? Seeing none. All right. Thank you so much, we appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Keep that list handy. Anyway. That takes us then to public testimony. Let me get my agenda back up here, thank you. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on this agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have two public hearings tonight. One is for Kaiser Mart, the liquor license application, change of ownership, and a resolution authorization for supplemental budget for the municipal court sewer fund and general administration. So other than that, you're welcome to talk to us. Okay? We're going to move on then? We're good? Okay. To those public hearings, and we'll start off with item 7A, which is the Kaiser Mart liquor license application, change of ownership. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 27, 2017, the city received an application for a change of ownership for the liquor license for Kaiser Mart located at 4940 River Road. The Oregon Liquor Control Commission requires a new application when changing ownership, location, or license type. As required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. As of this date, no response has been received from the property owners. Upon completion of a background check on the new owners, the Kaiser Police Department reported no reason to recommend denial of this application. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. As further recommended, city council recommend approval of the application for a change of ownership under guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinances of the city of Kaiser. The recommendation will then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before we say anything else, I'm going to open the public hearing. Are there any questions of staff about the staff report? And I don't believe I have anybody signed up for the public hearing. Does anybody would like to comment on the application for the change of ownership liquor license? Okay. Counsel President, oh, close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for the change of ownership as established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinance of the city of Kaiser, and forward that recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council recommend approval of the application for a change of ownership under the guidelines established by ORS 471.178 and the ordinance of the city of Kaiser, and forward that to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for approval. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item 7B, which is a resolution authorization for supplemental budget municipal court sewer fund and general administration. Before we turn over to city manager, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'll get this down eventually, it's a longtime habit. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wood?
Madam Mayor, city council, we almost made it this year. This is the first supplemental budget that we've had to do this entire year, so I'm feeling good about that. But unfortunately, here we are. The reason we're here, if two out of the three are good reasons, and one is not so good, but we'll live with it. So the first issue that will present itself tonight is general fund municipal court. We had originally anticipated about $225,000 in municipal court revenue, however, the revised projection is about $260,000. That increased revenue comes with a couple of associated variable costs, such as state county assessments, judge time, additional contractual services for credit card fees. So the first piece of this three-part supplemental budget is to recognize the additional municipal court revenue and appropriate that amount to cover the additional variable costs. The second item up tonight is sewer fund. As the result of the sewer reset that we experienced in January, we're seeing higher than expected than originally anticipated sewer revenues. Majority of the sewer revenue is passed along to city of Salem, who manages the regional wastewater system. So with the additional revenue, we have additional costs that we need to pay to the city of Salem. The third piece is administrative services fund, general administration. As we talked about during the budget committee meetings, our liability insurance is a retro plan, meaning we pay 75% of the normal premium, with the understanding that as claims come in, we'll pay up to 112% of our premium amount. We did receive a claim this year, so this is to recognize some additional amount into our liability insurance line item, moving that same amount out of contingency. So with that, if you have any additional questions, I'll feel free to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Wood? Counsel Herrera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the, in the general fund, when they say state and county assessments, is that a big, is that a lot of money, or is it...
That typically is a fair amount of money. It's anywhere between 17% to 19% roughly of the fees that we receive, and it's shared out. We'll see a portion of that back as, as the state actually gives us money back, so.
And contractual services include?
That's mostly credit card fees.
Okay.
And that's a 2% to 3% haircut at any given time.
Thank you, Tim.
The service that a lot of people really appreciate being able to...
The credit card is really the way of the future. We're seeing a lot more, more use of that as a payment method.
All right, any other questions? All right, and we don't have anybody signed up, is that correct, Tracy? So nobody has signed up? Anybody would like to weigh in? I did. Right before Chris gave his report. That's okay.
It's because she messed us up, too.
I did, I messed up the first one, so it's a different format than I was used to from eight years, so, you know, sometimes I kind of get a itch in the giddy up there. So anyway, would anybody like to speak to this issue on the supplemental budget? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 Authorization for Supplemental Budget of the Municipal Court Sewer Fund and General Administration.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that Kaiser City Council adopt Resolution R. 2017 Authorization for Supplemental Budget Municipal Court Sewer Fund and General Administration. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to administrative action, and that would be...
Text.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm on the same page. The Transportation Network Companies Taxi Regulations and Vehicle for Hire Ordinance. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. This issue's been kind of knocked around a little bit, and came just coincidentally about the same time that Mr. Wakefield from Yellow Cab Company came. Mr. Wakefield's issue, by the way, is not the bigger, broader issue, but it, his request, basically, to waive fees, to reduce the fees, or allow him some credit, in other words, so he didn't have to pay in Salem here, made sense to wait on that request until we figured out the bigger picture, because I discovered, I mean, I knew Salem was dealing with it, I didn't know it was going to go through quite so quickly in Salem. Salem's been dealing with Uber, Lyft, or what's called Transportation Network Companies, or TNCs. And if anybody's used Uber, I've never used Lyft, Uber's a kind of a convenient gee whiz kind of thing, on your smartphone, and is pretty handy for folks. Uber doesn't operate like a normal taxi company, of course. They consider their drivers to be independent contractors, and their drivers can drive whenever they want, they're not scheduled, so if they don't want to drive, they don't drive, if they do want to drive, they drive, not at all like a traditional taxi cab company. And Uber's been fairly aggressive, at least in the past, in terms of either operating without regulation, in violation, in fact, paid a fine to Salem a few years ago for doing that, in other cities, or pressing pretty hard for regulations that work for them. And that's what's occurred recently. The Salem council has become a little more friendly towards the Uber situation, and if you've read in the paper, they changed their regulations quite a bit to match up with Uber's requests, more or less. In any event, it's an interesting situation, and one that would normally only be somewhat interesting, except for the fact that unlike other businesses, you're not going to see a taxi, I don't think, operating only Salem. I mean, most, I mean, maybe, isn't a lot of fairs, but there's going to be times that people are going to want to go from Salem to Kaiser, and Kaiser to Salem, obviously. So under our current regulations, which are somewhat similar to Salem's former regulations, they would have to come in, they'd have to get, the insurance isn't a lot different, because our insurance was less, but the main difference is the background checks, and frankly, the licensing of the individual drivers. Under current regulations, brand-new regulations with Salem, they don't even license the drivers, they only license the company. And the police background checks aren't done, Uber does their own background checks, which is more or less true nationally, that's been a big issue for Uber. I guess Portland was able to negotiate police background checks there, but Uber apparently has been unwilling to do it in other places. There is, I want, on the plus side, Salem was able to get Uber to agree in their new regulations, an audit of their driver records occasionally, I don't know what the frequency is, there's, I mean, you can't do it a lot, because I think Uber would think that'd be too burdensome. But you can, Salem has, as part of their new regulations, a method to regulate that. So in my staff report, I listed three options for us to deal with this kind of interesting situation, where we're kind of tied at the hip in a way that you don't normally see in other situations, because of the nature of the business. And the first option was basically to just keep our current regulations. In that situation, I would believe that Uber and Lyft would either not register, violate our ordinance, or not operate in Kaiser. The third option I did not put in the staff report, I suppose, I have no idea if this is even possible, it seems unlikely, is for the companies such as Uber and Lyft to say, well, we don't want to violate Kaiser's ordinance, and we don't want to operate just in Salem, so we want to even operate in Salem. I don't know that that's likely to occur. I would, I would think that they would want to come back and try to negotiate something else, or maybe just leave the market like they did a few years ago. But they are expanding, I still don't know for sure, but I've heard they're operating in central Oregon in the Bend area. I know that there were some hiccups there at the last minute, but I think that that got pushed through. And it is, on the plus side, it's obviously, if you, I've used it a couple of times, it's a pretty handy thing, and it's an option for people that is more convenient and more reliable, apparently, than current taxi service. So I have extra copies of the email I sent, in case you didn't bring it, on Friday, I don't know if anybody needs that. It was just another list of, kind of a summarization of it. So you have kind of a dilemma there. On one hand, you have a reduction of the regulations, on the other hand, you have a service that a lot of people have been asking for, and is a transportation option that isn't currently available in the area, so. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Ryan?
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had, Counsel Reed?
So I just want to clarify, and I am pretty sure that this is clear, but, so taxis and the TNCs would be under the same regulations, they're regulating both.
Correct. And, and, and I'm sorry to interrupt, Counsel Reed, for the benefit of the audience who might not have seen my staff report, the staff report listed a second option of adopting Salem's regulations, more or less exactly, or a third option of not, of repealing our ordinance and just relying on Salem's regulations, which has some advantages in terms of administration, savings of costs for the business, and possibly a little less liability for the city, but I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you've pretty much answered my questions. Yes, thanks. So I've got a couple of questions. One is, if Salem is going to be collecting some of that data regarding drivers and their records and so forth, would they, would we be in a position to ask them to share that data, since we kind of share a travel shed?
Remember again, that they will only occasionally audit that information, so it's not as if they will routinely get information. It's only when they occasionally, and again, I don't know the frequency, actually decide to affirmably audit it, such as we could audit our franchise holders, for example, but I don't, I know that they have some pretty strict confidentiality rules with Uber under that audit system. Whether as a fellow governmental jurisdiction, we fall into an exception on those confidentiality rules they would have, I don't know. I did speak to the Salem City Attorney about that, and he was not sure if it was, if there was an issue of an actual complaint of an incident in Kaiser, then perhaps, but on, on another situation, where there was no concern at all, then it might be a little more difficult, based on the confidentiality regard. I mean, not that Salem wouldn't want to, I don't, I don't think that's the issue, it's whether they could, under their regulations and agreement with Uber.
We just want to make sure that if we go forward with some sort of, you know, allowance for Uber, that, you know, we would have access to data that we would need to protect citizens if there is a driver who is, you know, has been sanctioned or is not acceptable in Salem, that they just don't get a pass in Kaiser.
Mm-hmm. Well, I could certainly check on that in more detail.
Nate?
Just to remind you a little bit of the background, Kaiser never issued a single license until just a couple of months ago. We always relied upon Salem. In fact, there was a longstanding, by a previous city administrator, a longstanding interpretation, that as long as they were licensed in Salem, then we counted that as meeting our requirements. The only reason we issued a license is because Salem raised their insurance requirements, and a single individual wanted to beat the system and get a Kaiser license, and thinking that it would reverse work, and it didn't. So, so we've typically, we just simply have not licensed taxi cabs. And as far as the background investigations that the ordinance calls for, we have very limited ability to access information, and perhaps the chief can speak to the limited nature of the investigation, background investigations that we can do. Basically, we can only see what their driving record is, kind of thing. So, just, I want you to have a good perspective as to this environment of how we regulate these types of activities. We really, in the past, have not regulated them.
So, I don't know if anybody else has a question, I've got one more to follow up with, and that is, by the cities licensing taxis and taxi companies and so forth, there's been, would that be an assumed liability on the city's part, then, that there's some shared liability with, by, because they are the issuers of the license to the individual drivers versus, under this kind of arrangement, if any company hires somebody that is, that causes a problem, the liability is on them?
The, yes, pretty much. The liability is limited to a very small degree. It would require a particular case and some egregious action by a city person to miss something. But the issue on a case many years ago, I think, was actually the insurance limits. The person at the city did not, didn't double-check, and the insurance limits were extremely low, lower than what was required, and there was liability found. The, the issue is really one of, is it worth it to regulate it? That's, the liability is a small issue, it's not remote, terribly remote, but if you don't legislate and don't regulate something, you can't be found liable for not doing the job right, because you're not doing anything at all, basically. Before I forget, Madam Mayor, I did want to correct Mr. Brown on one item, it isn't just the driving record. I think what Nate's referring to is checking federal criminal records across state lines has become extremely difficult, based on federal law and the licensing procedure. We can check Oregon criminal records, and that's what we do, for example, for the marijuana licenses. So it is more than driving records, but, but Nate, in terms of being able to check broadly across state lines, that is relatively limited.
Okay. Good to know. Now Counsel Ryan?
Thank you. I just more of a statement, I've been following this closely through Salem and Portland, and Salem did obviously lessen their rules, that they had, you know, pretty tight restrictions, so that they could bring Uber and Lyft to the area. At the same time, it does even the playing field between all the companies to make it consistent, from what I can see. Even though they've lessened the rules, I did, it does look like the safety features are still intact, and there's, there's many of them for our community, and that was important to me. I do think that it will decrease our DUIs, and I think that would be great for the citizens of Kaiser, personally, and I think that it sounds like, because they're, they are 99, or 1099 contractors, we're honoring Salem's system of, you know, if they're, if they're limited from operating in Salem, I'm assuming that they, they would pull them as an operator completely, from what I can understand. So I think honoring Salem and the work that they've done is, you know, good partnership, so for that, I feel like it's a good thing for Kaiser, I just want to share that.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead, are you ready to put a motion on the table?
Yes.
Counsel Herrera? Yeah?
You know, on, on listing the regulations, would it be a future problem where they don't have to give a receipt? Is that something that, down the road?
They're actually, the new rules in Salem do not require a receipt. Now, if you've used Uber, it's automatic onto your phone, it's electronic.
I was going to say, because I was going to say that...
But, but there, as my understanding is, is the new rules don't require a receipt. I don't, I don't know if another company didn't, didn't do that, I don't know, or a taxi company wouldn't be required to give a receipt.
Thank you.
How does that work? I mean, if you run your credit card, isn't a receipt generated?
Yeah, it seems to be like we have it on our phone, usually.
Yeah.
Right.
It's through the app.
It's through the app. My, I think the question that Counsel Herrera's getting at is, could somebody else come into the field and operate and not provide any receipt, even electronically? Is that, if that's what you're getting at? I don't know. And I guess a traditional taxi, this is a summary, and I don't have, I have it, it's buried in the file somewhere, I'm sorry, the actual Salem ordinance is quite long, I'm assuming the summary's accurate, that there is no receipt required. I can't imagine that being an actual problem. I would think that if you're doing electronically, like Uber does, and I assume Lyft, I don't know for sure, does something similar, that's going to occur. If it's traditional cab, I would think they're going to want to make sure that the receipt is given just from their, protection of their business, too, so I wouldn't anticipate it's a problem, but if the question is, is a... So, I wouldn't anticipate it's a problem, but if the question is, is a receipt legally required, I, I don't, I do not believe so, based on the summary I received from Salem.
Wouldn't that be related to taxation, because partly for the driver, but also, or partly for the passenger, but for the driver?
Yeah, as I mentioned, I think as a practical matter, that's not going to be a problem.
Yeah, because the company's going, going to want to know.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they want to get their percentage, I would imagine. Okay, now we're ready to put a motion on the table, so we can discuss it. Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to return with an ordinance repealing the vehicle for higher ordinance.
Second. Yes, we moved the second that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to come back to council with an ordinance to repeal the, what'd you call it?
Vehicle for higher.
The vehicle for higher ordinance discussion. So this would eliminate the problem that the Willamette Valley Taxi came to us with, where they were, our old rules.
Right, it would, it means we wouldn't have to address that particular issue, right?
It'd be moot.
It'd be moot, right.
Okay, and then, as far as Uber, Lyft, and taxicabs companies, it's now the liability is on them for keeping track of their employees slash contractors, you know, however they have their business?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion. Counselor Ryan?
Just to clarify, point of clarification, so it sounds like you're saying, then we won't be, have, there won't be a fee in Kaiser for the business, right?
Right.
Just wanted to clarify that. And just for the record, Uber begins June 7th in Salem.
And I'm, I'm going to echo something else that was said, and I've also said on other occasions, one of the benefits, from my point of view, is the quick response that you get from the transportation network companies and the reduction of DUIs. Before somebody gets to rethink that, well, maybe I can drive, they're already there, and they're on the road back home, being driven home, and to me, that is worth doing right there, where you get, you know, people, before they can change their mind and drive drunk, or impaired. So to me, that is worth doing, if we have more options. Any further comments, discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Former Counsel Brendan Smith, there you go. He was commenting on Facebook about the whole Salem process, so. Calling him out.
He sucked us into it.
Yeah, he did. You know, I think we went willingly, actually. All right, that takes us to the consent calendar. Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's four items on the consent calendar tonight. Nine A, resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Brown Contracting, Inc. for Chumawa Road sidewalk improvement project. Resolution, the second one is Resolution B, authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with Hicks Striping and Curbing, Inc. for repainting of pavement legends. C is approval of the April 24th City Council work session minutes, and D, approval of the May 1st City Council work session minutes.
Thank you. Are there any polls? There are none. Counsel President Parsons?
I move that the City Council adopt the res, the consent calendar.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to liaison reports, and I think last time I picked. Oh, let's do the liaison reports, then I'll come back to the proclamation. Thank you for reminding me. Counselor Ryan, shall we start with you tonight?
Sure, I'm simple. Unfortunately, I've missed several things due to pneumonia, and I apologize, but I'm catching up, and things are going.
You're also healthy.
Thing, yes, things are going well, so I apologize for the delay on a couple of meetings. I did, however, attend coffee with Kathy, and I thought that was fabulous, our Mother's Day weekend, and then, of course, the pancake breakfast with the fire department, as always, is a tradition, and they did a fabulous, fabulous job. So, with that being said, I'll have more to report my next meeting, and thank you.
All right, thank you, and we're very glad you're doing better.
Thank you.
Counsel Freeman?
Let's see, well, we all know we had budget, attended the mayor's prayer breakfast, which was a wonderful event put on by the chamber, so thank you to everyone that was involved with that, and to our mayor for fabulous hosts. Planning meeting this month was canceled, along with traffic, so, kind of, I think it must be the time of year with Iris Festival coming up. Attended West Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting last month, or last week, seems like last month, but it was last week, and Mayor Clark was our guest. We also, West Kaiser participated Saturday with street cleanup, and there was five people that helped clean up all the way from Kaiser River Rapids Park to River Road on Chumawa, so thank you, and we had, I think, about two bags of trash. The Parks Forum, I just want to thank everyone for attending, and hopefully, the people that weren't attending are watching us on TV. And last week, attended the Marion County Commissioners Breakfast with the mayor. And then upcoming is Iris Festival this weekend, so please join us for the parade, and the big tent on Cherry.
The weather's going to be nice.
And the weather's going to be fabulous, and there's lots and lots of activities for kids and everyone, so I just hope everyone comes out and enjoys. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also was involved in the budget fund, and that was a lot, lot of good work, and thank you very much to the staff for getting that all in place, you made that a very easy process and excellent. I, I appreciated my first budget experience. We had an avid trip with the, some of the McNary seniors down in Ashland to see a couple of Shakespeare plays, and that was a fantastic experience. What a fantastic bunch of kids those are, so, really, really excellent experience there, and a big thank you to those teachers and all those who support the McNary avid program. Really does a lot of good for a lot of kids. We had a good discussion on the Parks Fee during the Parks Town Hall, and a lot of really informa, important discussions about that, and I would really encourage people to weigh in on, on, on your opinions about that. We need to hear from everybody, not just the louder, loudest people, but we need to hear from everybody, and we really are needing as much information as we can as we proceed with that. The McNary music groups, both the band, choir, and orchestra, had a fantastic showing at State. The choir, I believe, plays sixth, orchestra and band were both within the top five, at least one of their groups were both within the top five, and, which is really impressive. Says a lot, especially since two of those three music directors are, this is their first year at McNary, and so, really excellent job with that, also speaks a lot to the, the programs that have been built over the years. So that is something to really be proud of. Also, just a reminder that there is election deadline coming tomorrow, so we would encourage you to vote for that. Also, we have Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting coming up this Friday at 6:30 at the Mennonite Hall in Southeast Kaiser, and we would love to have a really big showing for that, so, thank you.
You're wearing something.
Oh, yes. Okay, so this shirt, I'm trying to get. Okay, so.
From Cass?
Yes, well, comes off Friday, I'm excited about that. But anyway, maybe I'll just move that. Okay, there we go. So, this shirt was, this logo's designed by the McNary Graphics Department, and I, I wish I could tell you the, the girl directly responsible for it, but I don't have that information. But Todd Layton was the one who produced this, and we are going to be selling these at the Kaiser Eclipse Festival, so be planning that on your calendars, and we have lots of wonderful things planned, and, so, we're excited.
Will they be available prior to, if people order them online?
Uh, don't know about that yet, because.
They'll, they'll be available prior, yes, but, and I think we were, we are going to put them online.
Okay, yeah.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
We have so many talented students, I love that they are getting real-life work experience in the graphic arts and so many other places, so, very exciting. Counsel President Parsons?
Um.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I, I was on vacation for the last week, so I was involved with the budget, and we got finished, so I could go on vacation, so I'm sorry that I missed last week, but upcoming, obviously, is Iris Fest, and so, it starts on Thursday, big kickoff, 75 degrees, and it's going to be fun the whole weekend, so I'm hoping that everybody comes out and sees us in the parade on Saturday.
All right, thank you very much. Counselor Herrera?
Yes, we had, I got to, on Cinco de Mayo, I got to talk to a bunch of fourth and fifth graders about what, what Cinco de Mayo is and why we don't celebrate it. True, true story. And then, this last week, this last week, I got to go to Washington Elementary and, for Career Day, and talk about being a city counselor. So, the question they always ask me is, how much you, how much do they pay you? That's great, you know? And then they follow up with, are you crazy? You know, no. But actually, it was really enjoyable, and they asked, really, fourth and fifth graders asked incredible questions. I'm so impressed with these kids. There was two different classes, and I want to thank Washington School for hosting a bunch of us, so. And then, we had a fundraiser Saturday night for Blancheet, I participated in their annual fundraiser, which reminds me, McNary has their big fundraiser booster, is June 6th, so start writing in your calendars, because it's the biggest event for our sports, and speaking of sports, squad and sport, our baseball, softball, track, all our athletes, because they work really hard, and I, I've got to get to track, I've been to all of them except track, so. And, of course, Mother's Day, we had a great Mother's Day, we celebrated over here in a local establishment by the lake, and I had a great, my brother's grandson would be my great nephew, who graduated from Willamette, played football over there, and just an incredible kid, so congratulations, AJ, and he's going to have a great future ahead of him in religious studies and psychology, so. Incredible young man, so, that's it, that's all I got. Oh, don't forget to vote, everybody get your vote out there, put your vote on, and don't forget to party on Saturday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and see you at lunch on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Only thing I, just a couple of things to add, I attended on May 10th, last Wednesday, the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. They can just continue to do, or it's a well, continue, amazed me in terms of how well-run an organization they are, really covering some, a lot of details and a lot of things that they need to attend to. The noteworthy thing, now, I was not able to make it, but they did have a invasive weed removal party last Saturday in the morning, Kaiser Rapids Park. Turned out a lot of folks for that, a lot of great kids from McNary, I believe, were going to be down there, or were down there, so, and I think, I don't know if the Scouts, Boy Scouts were down there or not, but I heard a report that they might be going, so. Matt Lawyer, our chair, current chair of the council, will be testifying at Salem City Council, or may have testified at City Council, just to inform them about the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, what they do. The, especially considering that they were able to go through and really get a better definition of the boundary. So just making them aware of that, since it really extends, it does extend into Salem, and they're working to get the boundary recognized by some other jurisdictions, I think that may be part of it. And what that does is that allows the council to apply for Marion and Soil Water Conservation Grants and, and be recognized by the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, or OWEB. So, there's that. And then, finally, I think their next general meeting will be in September, they're going to have kind of their annual gathering in June amongst the council members, so appreciate Mark Calier for coordinating that and continuing to do some outstanding stuff for the, for our city, really, and the coun, and that council in particular. Finally, just because I happen to know a little bit more about some things, because I have kids in the, in the music program, McNary, the band plays fourth, so that was outstanding. String Orchestra, they tied for fifth with McKay, and these are the OSAA state championships, and then, they were one point behind fifth place in choir, and I can tell you, listening to them, they did a phenomenal job, and their new choir director, Jacob Rist, is really just an amazing individual, is doing some great things there. Thank you.
Got to love it, we have so many talented young people, this is exciting. And I got to enjoy the talents of another group at McNary, because they, two of the culinary students catered the Art Association Mother's Day Tea on Saturday. They did a great job, the food was very nicely plated, well-presented, and absolutely delicious. And then, a group of young ladies, who have been doing this for now three years, have homeschooled girls, and one young man, were the servers. Just wonderful group of young people who got to meet artists, they got to see some of the work in the gallery, and we got to visit with them as well. So congratulations to the Kaiser Art Association for another successful Mother's Day Tea. It was Birds of a Feather, so some of the hats that were created for that were also very entertaining, so watch their Facebook page for pictures of the top three that were awarded prizes. Oh, yes, I've got it right here, as a matter of fact. So there's a couple of things coming up, somebody might have picked up a theme about Iris Festival. Yep, this is the big week, and we're kicking off, so a couple of things I want to point out, the mayor's pet parade, so bring your pet, and it does not necessarily have to be a dog, although they walk better on leashes, but my daughter and I will be there with our pair of guinea pigs, and they will not be on leashes, we're going to, we've got little baskets, they love to ride in and let people pet them. So, pet parade, that will be meeting up at Creekside Shopping Center, and will be the event prior to the big parade on Saturday. The other thing I would like to point out is the, Kaiser Times has produced this year's official Iris Festival guide.
That was beautiful, good job.
There we go. Absolutely fabulous work, great job. All the information's in here, the maps, the schedules, and the events are all in here, and a little greeting from yours truly. So check it out, it should have arrived in your mailbox, and make sure that you enjoy this wonderful weekend, because we're going to be blessed with some great weather this year. Last year for Crown the Hound, it was a little soggy, but you know what, the show went on.
We just missed some irises.
Yeah, and this year, oh, the iris, if you haven't driven by the Iris Gardens, they're in bloom. They're beautiful, they are open this year.
Okay.
So, not all of them, but they're getting close.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Karina, I spoke with Karina via text, and she said she apologizes, she didn't realize it was tonight, and so, please accept it on her behalf, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So I will do that. The other thing I want to point out to folks, and I just lost my page here, is that the, oh, nuts, okay, the schedule for the Kaiser Rotary Amphitheater Concert Series is now available online, if you go to kra.org.com. These are the free concerts that are cosponsored by the City of Kaiser, down at Kaiser, Kaiser Rapids Park all summer long. The initial concert will be on June 24th with Dina and Los Rumberos, and finishing up on September 9th with one of our favorites, JFK. So it's a party all summer long, check it out, mark your calendar. Those, the attendance grows bigger every year, the lineup gets longer every year, and we just have a good time, because Kaiser works hard, but we also play hard. So it'll be a good time to come down and enjoy the free concert series. So make sure you get that on your calendar. The other part I want to mention, and thank you for mentioning the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, well, we have four community gardens in Kaiser. We received a presentation from the person who is in charge of the John Knox Community Garden over on Cummings Lane, but that's one of four gardens that we have. If you're interested in getting a plot, please go to Marion Pope Food Share, they have the listing of the gardens and the availability, also classes and other activities, and they also encourage gardeners, if you're growing more than you need, share it with the food bank. It is so, so special to have fresh-grown food right there in the box every single week, so people can share the bounty that we have in the valley. So, our community gardens, they're a fabulous part of our community. Okay, with that, and I lost my page, so I don't remember if there's anything else I was supposed to announce?
No.
So I'm going to do the proclamation. Back up here, because on top of everything else, this weekend is not just Iris Festival, it is also Lemonade Day. This is a great program that is run in this area by the Salem-Kaiser Education Foundation to help our young people learn about being an entrepreneur, about running businesses, about how to do marketing, money management, customer service, all these wonderful skills that they are going to be able to take and use their entire lives. So, at the request of, and I'm delighted to be able to do this, for the, there we go, for our Lemonade Day, here you go. Whereas Lemonade Day is a nationwide effort to teach children how to start, operate, and own their own businesses, and whereas Lemonade Day teaches students the basics, basic skills of business essential to their success and Oregon's economic prosperity, and whereas students learn business money management through the philosophy of spend some, save some, share some, and whereas the Salem-Kaiser Education Foundation is hosting Lemonade Day for students throughout the Salem and Kaiser area to participate. to participate in this program designed to cultivate our budding entrepreneurs, and whereas students throughout Kaiser and Salem will be creating their Lemonade Day businesses, marketing them, and open for business on May 20th with the help and mentorship of business people in our community, and whereas the City of Kaiser supports and encourages our children and youth to participate in the learning opportunity provided by Lemonade Day activities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by Mayor Kathy Clark of the City of Kaiser, Oregon, with the concurrence of the city council assembled in regular session, that May 20th, 2017, is Lemonade Day. In the City of Kaiser, and I call upon all citizens to recognize our young entrepreneurs through the patronage of lemonade stands throughout our community on this important day. And I'll be signing it here, the 15th of May, 2017. And I'll get this to the Salem-Kaiser Education Foundation. Last check, they had over 530 stands. Fantastic, that's over double what they had last year. This is spread throughout the community, and I gotta tell you, these young people are so creative. So check out as many as you can, there's an app that'll help you find as many of the stands around town as you can get to, and go thirsty, because there's lots of great lemonade to be had in this community, so... And it'll be warm enough to enjoy it. A little cool and refreshing. All right. Thank you. Okay. I did want to, I got my program back up here. There's one thing I do want to mention that's coming up, and that will be, I'm continuing work with the Marion, the Mobile Lament Homeless Initiative Transition Team as we work on the job qualifications for a project manager. There's also another change that is happening, and that is the Mobile Lament Valley Council of Governments has announced their new executive director, and that will be Mr. Sean O'Day. He will start on Monday. Sean, the Mobile Lament cog. Snagged him. That's called winning. So, we're very, I'm a little excited that he's coming on board. But want to thank Nancy Boyer, who has been filling in as the interim director, due to the previous director having to leave for personal medical reasons, and we wish her the absolute best as well. Thank you to Nancy for her great work during this transition and guiding the process of recruitment, interviewing, and hiring. So it's good for us, we are a member organization, it's good for our three-county area to have strong leadership in that position. Okay, other business. This time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not listed on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim? John?
Yeah, I'd like to just take two minutes to remind the councils of something and inform any of the viewers that, with regard to how the police department and other agencies in the state, and probably across the nation, handle some violations, and I'm speaking especially about parking and noise violations. Those are largely complaint-driven, and I'll tell you why. If you're sitting in your house, and you're watching your big-screen TV with your surround sound, and you've got Gladiator turned up, for example, and it gets too loud, and your neighbors can hear it, and the cops can hear it from the street, you really don't want the cops coming knocking on your door and telling you to turn your system down. But if your neighbors are disturbed by that, that's a violation, and so we expect your neighbors to call us. And they can call in anonymously, by the way, and I encourage them to call in anonymously, and they will respond and tell your neighbors that their music is too loud. Similarly, if your car is parked going the wrong way on the street, we generally don't police those, that situation, unless a neighbor calls and alerts us to it. If we see a persistent problem, both with noise, let's say that noise is playing at 2:00 in the morning, we're gonna assume the neighbors are bothered by that, we're gonna stop. If we see a car that's persistently parked the wrong way, and maybe has moss and leaves under it and on it, we're gonna try to move that car, perhaps even cite them. My point being that if you see things like noise violations and parking violations, and they bother you, don't just wait for the cops to respond. We probably need your help to get those solved, if they're a neighborhood problem, or if you're bothered by them. And once again, I want to state that if you're in your house, and you can hear noise electronically produced by your neighbors, that's a violation. And if you need help resolving that, call us, and we'll help you resolve that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Nate?
Just wanted to share with the council, a recent, this last week, I returned from the National American Planning Association Conference, and it was, it was always, it's always very instructional to do that. We have some issues we have to correct, and that's, one of those is in our sign code. Because of the, as the Supreme Court decision of Reed versus the City of Gilbert plays out, there are some things we have to correct in our sign code, so you'll be seeing that in the near future. It's also interesting, some of the, some of the instruction is, in Oregon, we do that stuff, you know, we're way ahead of it, we could teach the class. Other things, we, it just ranges across the board, so it was a good experience. Also wanted to let the council know that our Transportation Growth Management Grant consultant selection has been concluded, and I cannot pay a fee, because OTAC does not have, we don't know what that acronym, we don't believe it's an acronym, we believe that's a title. Anyway. So they are the, they are the lead consultant, together with the Kittleson and Associates and Angelo Planning Group. There's a large team that has been assembled, and right now, we're in negotiations for scope and contract. So that's the reason the Planning Commission was canceled, is I had hoped a month ago that we would have been through the process already, but we were not. So this is the first time that you have heard who the consultant is. So work is ramping up continual. We expect this to be a very vigorous community outreach process. We want to, we want to engage all aspects of our community. And so we'll be contacting neighborhood associations, civic organizations, everybody that is part of our community, we want involved in this process. So it's going to be a major effort, and we are, we are getting prepared for that.
Question, so let's say there's an organization, a faith-based organization, a nonprofit, and so forth. If they are interested in participating, they get their contact information to you?
Sure, absolutely.
Fantastic.
And right now, we're, there will be a Citizens Advisory Committee, and we have yet to decide exactly how many stakeholders are gonna be on that. But we expect property owners, we expect all of these community organizations to have representation there, so...
So I would like to throw a thought into the mix, because one of our key needs that will be addressed through the urban growth boundary will be housing. I would like to see someone who could speak for people who are renting, as well as property owners, because the rental market for housing is such a critical part of providing stable housing and affordable housing in our community. So either through the property management, the property management side is one part, but if there are people who work with families or with helping place people in housing, I think that's an important voice.
Sure. Keep in mind, this is focused on transportation-related issues. We are looking, though, to create a more flexible framework for our regulatory structure. It's, it's going to be a challenge to get some aspects of our community involved, such as, you know, renters. We don't maintain a list of who, how many renters we have in our community. But we will certainly, we will certainly make the effort to reach out to all aspects of our community, including renters.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Shannon?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Watching out for me here. Written Communications, I don't have anything additional tonight. Agenda Input, June 5th at 7:00 PM. City council will meet in regular session, which means we do have a Fifth Monday, which is Memorial Day weekend, so have a great time, everybody, and remember to be safe out there, click it or ticket is underway. So being safe, not only in terms of, you know, driving and seat belts and so forth and proper restraints, but also put down the phone. June 12th, 6:00 PM, will be a city council special session on the Kaiser Police Public Safety Fee. We would like to encourage as many people as possible to come and listen, talk, discuss. Let's talk about the things that are meaningful for our community, and public safety is one of our job number ones in this community. We understand that keeping a community safe and being able to take care of problems from, you know, loud music to the big bust that happened over off Delight Street, these are important for making sure that Kaiser is sustainable and safe into the future. So let's have this conversation, please, and we want to hear from all of you. June 19th, we will also then meet in regular session at 7:00 PM, and that is all I have on Agenda Input. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilor Herrera?
Madam Mayor, I just want to add on to what Nate was talking about as far as community outreach. He approached me about reaching the Spanish-speaking community, which I thought was very interesting, and I will, would be honored to help out on that.
Please do.
On the upcoming, so I think it's great that you, he mentioned that, and it says a lot for our city to go outreach to other communities that have not been reached before, so.
So we've, we've actually had the conversation about what materials need to be translated into Spanish, and so that's a component of this project.
Excellent. I'm delighted to hear that, that's great. More voices at the table, absolutely. So, Irish Festival weekend, I'll remind your friends and neighbors that if they are wanting to drive on River Road on Saturday morning, it's not happening. So, you know, pull up a lawn chair, visit with your neighbors, enjoy the parade, enjoy the 3K and 5K, all of the events that are happening this weekend. This is our celebration as a community. Thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and the volunteers for putting it together. Let's have a great time, and a safe time, and enjoy it. Thank you so much, everybody, and we are adjourned. It is 8:04.